Regular meeting was given to the public by forwarding the complete agenda to all requested radio stations and newspapers. Copies of the complete agenda are available by, for inspection at all public schools and at the superintendent's office. Anyone desiring information as to forthcoming meetings should contact the superintendent's office. Denise, roll call. Uh, Pledge of Allegiance first? Thank you. Sorry. Anyway. Way to be on the ball, Denise. Roll call.
Ms. Adams?
Here.
Mr. Bryan?
Here.
Mrs. Landry?
Here.
Mr. Tierney?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Mr. Price?
Here.
Mrs. Mutter?
Here. Next, we have awards and recognitions.
Good evening. I'd like to begin by inviting our guests from Trumper to the floor. Tonight, we are shining the spotlight on the remarkable student athletes and outstanding coaching staff of Trumper High School, which is one of only thirty-nine Wisconsin high schools to earn the prestigious Wisconsin Interscholastic Athletic Association Award of Excellence for the 2024-25 school year. This distinguished honor recognizes WIAA member schools that exemplify the highest standards of athletic leadership, sportsmanship, and community engagement. To achieve this recognition, schools must meet rigorous criteria, including ensuring that all coaches meet WIAA requirements, hosting regular and meaningful conversation with leadership teams, coaches, student athletes, and families, and promoting the values of ethics, integrity, and respect in every arena. The award also reflects a commitment to service, recognizing teams who give generously of their time and talents to benefit their school and community, and who consistently display exemplary sportsmanship at every level of competition. This achievement is not just a testament to wins, it is a celebration of character, dedication, and the spirit of excellence that defines Trumper Athletics. Congratulations to our incredible student athletes and coaches. Your hard work, leadership, and community commitment make us all very proud.
Next, we have the introduction of our student ambassador, Mr. Tierney.
He's a junior, and I will let him introduce himself.
Um, uh, currently, so I am currently a junior at Trumper High School. At school, I enjoy the various different classes that allow me to find out what is interesting to me and what is not. Outside of the classroom, I'm involved in cross-country swimming, track, band, and Skills USA, as well as the school's student athlete leadership team. Through these activities, I have been able to go to the WIAA State Cross Country Meet, WSA Honors Band, and the North Central Regional Drone Competition in Flint, Michigan. Currently, my plan for high school, after high school, is to pursue an undergraduate degree in biomedical engineering and continue with a career in that field. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have any questions, feel free to weigh in. Next, we have the superintendent's report.
Uh, thank you and good evening. Uh, tonight I have two important recognitions I'd like to share with the board. The first recognition is a recognition for Dr. Todd Price, KUSD's board clerk. Earlier this month, Dr. Price received Achievement Level III status from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, or the WASB. WASB instituted the Member Recognition Point System in nineteen eighty-eight to recognize board members who actively participate in board development opportunities. Points are awarded for attending state conferences, workshops, WASB events, testifying before legislative committees, and other opportunities. In order to achieve Achievement Level III status, a board member must earn two-hundred-and-twenty-five points. So congratulations, Dr. Price. Uh, the second recognition I have for this evening is for the Head Start Policy Council members. In honor, and if there are any Head Start Policy Council members in the audience, if you could please wave, just so we can recognize you. Okay. Um, I was hopeful that that's okay. Um, in honor of National Head Start Awareness Month, I want to recognize our KUSD Head Start Program and the Head Start Policy Council. The KUSD Head Start Program serves three-hundred-and-eighty-nine students, ages three to four, three to five, actually, with economic need. This program provides comprehensive family support and helps prepare students for success in school. Every Head Start Program must have a policy council, and the policy council exists in order to give parents a voice in how their program spends money, what children do in the classrooms, and how the program works with community members. Yolanda Adams from our school board represents the school board on the council. Uh, we have our, um, principal for Head Start in the audience as well, Rhonda Lopez, and I believe Mr. Bryan is going to be attending, um, the policy meetings here coming up shortly.
Chris?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Chris?
Chris, I'm sorry. And Ms. Schmeling is a former, uh, policy council attendee. Thank you. I, I didn't have that in my notes. I didn't. Uh, the policy council members volunteer and are elected to serve on the council. So I'd want to take this time to express my sincere thanks for KUSD's Head Start Policy Council members with us in the crowd, Head Start Familia, and the KUSD Head Start staff. Thank you very much.
Okay, next, we have our legislative report. Dr. Price?
Uh, yes, for the Southeast Wisconsin School Alliance, there's a discussion about AB2, uh, about wireless communication devices, and AB5, our Assembly Bill, which requires school boards to make instructional materials available for inspection. There's also, uh, it's not moving too much right now, but the rehiring of the Annuities Bill that Superintendent and I have been following pretty closely and others. If you are keen on supporting this work and joining some of the cosponsors, please contact your legislature if you not, have not already. That's about it.
Thank you, Dr. Price. Next, we have views and comments by the public. Welcome to all who have signed up to speak tonight. The board values your input and interest in KUSD. We'd like to remind you that school board meetings are not public meetings, but official business meetings held in public. We have a very short list tonight, uh, starting with Robin Cullen.
Good evening. I'm Robin Cullen from the city of Kenosha, and I want to, um, begin tonight by recognizing something positive, and that is the work being done by the Head Start Program. It truly represents the best of what public education can be, connecting families, supporting early learners, and addressing real community needs. And I also want to commend the district for taking steps to screen students for lead exposure. That kind of public health leadership shows deep care for our students and the future of our community. Now turning to the budget, according to the Third Friday Count, KUSD lost seven-hundred-and-twenty-three students this year, about a four percent decline, and that drop translated in over nine-point-four million dollars less in general state aid. And while the district will receive a one-time declining enrollment exemption of about three-point-eight million, that's temporary, and next year, the base funding authority will set, will still shrink, meaning that the district must rely more on local property taxes to make up the gap. That's important because when state aid goes down, property taxes go up, and the shortfall doesn't vanish. It shifts to local taxpayers, and many people will be surprised when they see their tax bills this December, especially since they voted down a referendum last year. And even more concerning is that a portion of those taxes isn't staying in KUSD at all. It's being diverted to private voucher schools through the state's voucher program, and most taxpayers have no idea. So that's why I'm urging this board to pass a resolution asking the city of Kenosha to include a line item on local property tax bills showing exactly how much money is being redirected from public schools to private voucher programs. The city of Green Bay already does this. Their community now sees a clear, transparent breakdown on the tax bill, and there's also a new state legislation, Assembly Bill 504 and State Senate Bill 483, that would make this practice standard across Wisconsin. Kenosha should join that effort. Transparency builds trust, and trust builds stronger schools. And as we celebrate the sex, the success of programs like Head Start and the district's lead screening, let's extend that same spirit of care and honesty to our finances. Our families deserve to know where every education dollar goes, whether it's funding classrooms, protecting children's health, or offsetting the costs of private school vouchers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Alex Amon, virtually.
Madam President, they have not checked in.
All right, Sam Ruchnick.
Good evening, friends and neighbors. Sam Ruchnick, six-two-two-Ten Street. I'm here tonight to beg this school board to reject anything having to do with Bridges' math curriculum. The Bridges' math curriculum focuses on abstract reasoning and the why behind math. This actually goes against the science of learning for young, for young kids. Piaget, one of the founders of modern educational theory, argued that children progress through distinct stages of cognitive development, beginning with basic skills like memorization, and with the ability to reason abstractly emerging only later as one of the more advanced cognitive abilities. Bridges is cognitively inappropriate for elementary school kids. As a parent, many nights I've had to Google what my son was being asked to do by his elementary and middle school math teachers, and I'm a math teacher with a bachelor's degree in mathematics. How can our district be okay with cutting parents off from their child's math education? Because if someone like me has to Google their kid's math homework, how can we expect parents who didn't go to college for math to help their kids on their math homework? This district knows that few, if any, of our elementary school teachers were taught how to teach this new math in their teacher education programs because this is a Wisconsin-wide problem. This district knows that our students have been getting into high school unprepared for Algebra I. They actually found an easy math class from Ohio called Math Modeling and Reasoning, renamed it Algebra II: Modeling and Statistics, and gave it to all the high schoolers who never learned arithmetic. This is not an Algebra II class. The course trainer even agreed that it wasn't, but when confronted about it not being an Algebra II class by math teachers, the district deflected, saying that few colleges required kids to have Algebra II or precalculus anyway. This allows the district to keep the graduation rates high, even if it means kids are graduating with a class that says Algebra II on paper, despite it not being an Algebra II class. We've already given Bridges eight years, and our scores have worsened. If the district knows it has been a failure, why are they suggesting that we try the same awful curriculum again? I don't think it's because of corruption or Bridges' sales reps trying to buy them over. It might be because they've never taught math in a post-pandemic public high school, and so they've never seen and witnessed firsthand how badly Bridges has hurt a generation of Kenosians. But regardless of why they're pushing Bridges' math, the fact is, parents hate Bridges' math, math teachers hate Bridges' math, and forcing curriculum like Bridges' math upon elementary school teachers is one of the main reasons why we have such abysmal math scores. Board members, please do not vote to renew Bridges' math again. Thank you.
Okay, and that's the, that concludes our comments. Uh, thank you to all who spoke. Please know that in alignment with state statute, board members will not reply to public comments unless they're related to an item on tonight's agenda and will do at the time the item appears on the agenda. Next, we have the remarks by the president. I just want to say thank you, Ms. Lopez, before you go. All right, thank you, love you. Okay, really appreciate all of your work. Um, Mrs. Schmeling, I appreciate all the hard work that you did, um, and Mrs. Adams as well. And I'm saying this because I was a Head Start parent. I was a Head Start parent who volunteered in the classroom, and as a result, I went on to get my teaching certificate and taught for twenty-eight years, and it was because of Head Start and all the wonderful teaching that I saw in that classroom. So thank you very much. Now, there was a couple of emails that I received this week regarding food shortages and hungry students, and I just want to make sure that everyone understands that the district does have free breakfast and free lunch for students. Now, I understand on the weekends, students may have shortages, and in three days, because of the possibility of the shutdown continuing, maybe probability, those shortages may continue and get worse because of the ending of food share and SNAP benefits. So I urge you all to please reach down deep and help out our local food factories because they really need it, and I know the lines are long now, so thank you. Next, we have the administrative and supervisory appointments. And we have none.
There are none.
Okay, now consent agenda.
Move to approve, um, consent agenda items A, B, and C.
Second.
Motion has been made in second, and for the consent agenda items A, B, C, A, B, and C, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, uh, chair votes aye, motion passes, brings us to old business, controlled entrances, funding options update. And this is a report, not an action item.
Uh, actually, there is an action item.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Please forgive me, there is an action item at the end.
Yep, um, so just, I'll provide some context, and then Hampton, if you wish to, uh, take it from there, please do. We've been talking about, uh, controlled entrances, um, at the seven schools that are still in need of them in the district, uh, for several months, uh, actually over a year. The, um, state, the stage where we're at, at the last board meeting, we discussed funding options, uh, for these controlled entrances. There were several, I believe three, we talked about. Um, we're at the point now where to determine which one we, um, we need, we really need to take the next step in our design work, and I'll let Mr. Hampton pick it up from there.
Thank you, Dr. Price. Um, you're exactly right. At this stage, we need to finalize what the project costs will be. Remember when we first did this estimate? It was in the midst of tariffs, and there was a lot more of uncertainty going on in our worlds. Now, some of those worries have subsided, so the costs of the project should come down substantially, but when we ended that stop point, design work was only about twenty percent complete. So now we need authorization from the board to go ahead and authorize the company Riley Construction to finish the, the real detailed design work. We did have several safety committee meetings where we reviewed the plans and the, and the designs and the sketches, made a couple, uh, suggestions and alterations to a couple of the designs, but mostly they're intact. There is one school, Lance Middle School, where there's an alternative suggestion, but we are asking the board for permission to reengage Riley to complete the design work, and that does come at a cost of about, up to three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars to complete that design work and really get into the nitty-gritty HVAC, plumbing, electric, get the, the full scope, and get that dollar amount that we would then use to decide how are we going to best fund this.
Questions, Mr. Hampton? Yes, Mr. Tierney?
I was just going to make a motion to approve.
Sounds good.
Riley Construction to go forward with the, the plan for the estimation of up to three-hundred-and-seven thousand dollars to get the first step going.
I'll second.
So the motion is to authorize the three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars to complete the design work, and is seconded by Mrs. Landry. Yes, Mrs. Adams?
Um, I believe he's, he wanted Riley Construction as part of the motion, am I correct, Bob?
Yeah, I said.
You want them, yeah.
Okay, that wasn't, yes, all right, and thank you. Riley Construction is part of, yes, okay. Um, any further questions? A discussion, yeah?
No, I, I commend my board members for taking such a proactive move on this. Just what were, what were the alternatives for Lance Middle School in general, or what you've mentioned alternative?
So without getting into the specifics of the design, it's, um, looking at an alternative to, that was one of the most disruptive patterns that you would have to change the traffic flow. If you can kind of visualize the way Lance Middle School is and where the main office is, right when you walk into that vestibule, that's like a main artery. That's where students pass right through the whole building. So in order to move the main office up into where that hallway is, so where you would have entrance, main office, and then hallway, that would be a very disruptive project. The alternative would be to almost create a vestibule, an additional vestibule, so you still accomplish the controlled entrance concept where you have a check-in for visitors that get screened before they get access to the hallway. So before they even get, there's a checkpoint that determines, does this person really need to get access to the main office or any further than the door here? Are they just dropping something off? Can we, you know, leave it at the door there? And we have the monitor, or we have a security door entrance monitor there. So that can be accomplished, we can accomplish the controlled entrance concept and the security checkpoint without having to do a massive remodel and redesign, and that was a recommendation from the Safety Committee.
And the, um, principal from Lance was part of it.
And the principal was part of the Safety Committee.
All right, further questions?
That's a key part of this motion, is we're asking them to complete the design work based on those recommendations from the committee.
Yes. Ms. Adams?
Mr. Hampton may, may have just answered my question because my question was, um, the three-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars, if approved, is to finish the eighty percent that they didn't finish, right? So they completed twenty percent design work, there's eighty percent left.
Exactly.
And then other costs will come later.
When they finish the complete design work, then we'll have a target number that says in order to accomplish these designs as recommended by the committee, it'll cost this dollar amount.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Chair vote, any opposed? Hearing none, chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have new business, report of contract in aggregate of seventy-five thousand Gordon Flesh Company.
And I'll introduce Amy Franz, our purchasing agent on this item.
Um, hi, good evening, yes. Uh, I am proposing and recommending Gordon Flesh be our new vendor for some of our copier fleet that is, is coming up for review. We do have machines that are very old, and it's very disruptive to the schools at this current moment, uh, with them breaking down and everything else. Uh, this committee, we did go, we didn't go out to RFP, but what I did do is go off of state contracting with our Sourcewell, which, um, is, is a free service for us to use, and so I invited three vendors to come participate. I had Impact, Gordon Flesh, and Forward TDS, and, uh, Gordon Flesh did come in with good numbers. They have good reviews. They do right now work with Racine Unified, they have been with them for eleven years, and they keep renewing their contracts with them as their service is just phenomenal. Our current vendor right now, I do believe that, um, as for their machines and their tech service is really good. Their machines and their customer service, I don't believe they're supporting our school district and our, our school's needs for, uh, to, to provide these information for these students and all their copying needs, what they need for their offices.
Questions? Yes, Dr. Price?
Uh, so, um, we, we did as school board receive a question from another vendor, um, but just to clarify, so, um, when you say you sent on our, you didn't send out an RFP, but you heard from all three, three companies, and, and this was the best bid, basically?
Yes.
Okay, and, uh, just, just, I'm, uh, this is really out of my curiosity, my apologies, but, um, in terms of, uh, the numbers of machines we have and how much copying, generally speaking, we do, knowing that we're moving to online, right? PDFs and stuff.
So sometimes our, our numbers can be a little bit, um, different, but right now we have forty-five machines that we've owned, and they are well over, they're over-usage. They are just, yeah, the life is gone, and so they're constantly breaking down, and some of these schools only have one machine. We do then have thirty-nine more machines that are expiring in December. So I combine them all together to get us better pricing, and with going through the state contracting, not only did we get that pricing, but then our manufacturer through our vendor, uh, also gave us additional discounts for being an education institution.
Yeah, I did read that, so appreciate it, thank you.
Absolutely.
Other questions? Mr. Bryan?
Uh, was there a motion? I was going to make a.
There wasn't a motion yet.
Move to approve Administration's recommendation.
Motion made and seconded. Any further discussion?
Yes. I thought I heard you say you didn't do RFP, that you had them in your office. Did you do the RFPs on this?
No, I did not do an RFP.
Didn't you ask that, Todd?
That's what I was trying to get at.
You thought that they did the RFP, so could you just explain why there wasn't a RFP for four-hundred thousand?
So we didn't go out to our own RFP as we went through, uh, it's a vendor called Sourcewell who does state contracting with the state of Wisconsin, that we can, as an education institute, use those contracts to negotiate, um, any kind of deals or contracts.
Bigger scale RFP.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you. And that brings us to the new course proposals. Hmm, High School Band, yes.
Yep, and this will be Ms. Tyndall, and I believe, uh, Mr., is it Mr. Plank for, uh, for the High School Band?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Plank, Coordinator of Fine Arts, and I are here tonight to propose two new high school courses, High School Band, Introduction to High School Band, and Introduction to High School Band Honors. And these two new courses address an equity issue, um, so students new to high school wanting to, um, engage in band, we really don't have an appropriately named course if you are new to an instrument or new to band. We do have this course for orchestra, so we do have Intro to Orchestra and, um, Intro to Orchestra Honors, so this would be kind of leveling that playing field and more appropriately scheduling those kids into courses that, um, parallel with the instruction that they need as a new-to-band student. Scott can answer any questions that you might have?
Questions for Mr. Plank? Yes.
Uh, no, I just want to thank you for your service. Uh, it's just, uh, really a tool, our, our, all the work that you do with all the music and the kids that get involved. I didn't know that we had an intro to orchestra. My kid does orchestra, and so, uh, how's that working?
It's working well. Um, we did that, I think, two, two or three years ago, and, uh, we've kind of been using a different course name to allow for some students who either want to take a second instrument or are new to band, so we felt that this was the right time to actually add that course, the appropriate course name in.
Mrs. Landry?
Like to make a motion to approve?
Okay.
Second.
Wait a minute, somebody's making a motion?
I'll second.
Okay, motion to, to accept it? And, Ms. Dr. Price?
Yep, second.
Second it? All right, any further discussion? Uh, did you have a question, Mrs. Stevens?
I was just, I was just going to say, I, I believe Ms. Stevens made a second, so I just, just for the record.
Gotcha, thank you.
Make sure we get it right, sorry.
I wasn't sure if she had a question or what. All happened at once there. Heard it out of the side of your eye?
Yes, outside my eye.
Thanks. All right. Any further discussion, questions, anything? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Plank.
Thank you.
All right, and that brings us to adoptions of instructional materials for kindergarten through fifth grade mathematics.
Thank you. Stacy Cortez, who is the coordinator for elementary math and sciences, is here today to present, um, a proposal for the adoption of instructional materials for K5 math instruction. Um, as you all know well, our, um, curriculum adoption cycle involves many stages, so we are here today to kind of outline that process that has been, um, happening since last year. We started engaging in the process. Stacy can kind of outline for you what her team and the math review, curriculum math review team has done, so let Stacy kind of walk us through this.
Thank you, whoever's clicking for me. Um, these are our team members that made up.
These are our team members, they're made up of teachers from every grade level, as well as special education teachers, ESL teachers, instructional coaches. And we also have district-level coaches on the team as well as coordinators. This process did start in May and part of our curriculum review is to get feedback on the current program, which is Bridges' Mathematics Second Edition. So we put for the whole month of May, feedback survey in the torch and got feedback from teachers on what they thought in regards to the current program. Then in July, the resource review team that you just saw came together to analyze that feedback and talk about next steps. That team met again in August to finalize their recommendation and plan next steps for what this year would entail. And then move forward to today where we are bringing that proposal to the school board.
And I just want to be clear, this is for next year's instruction, so we are a bit ahead of the game here, I feel. But in order to be prepared for things that need to be in place for summer of twenty-six, we need to present it tonight and get your approval.
The feedback that was given to teachers was designed around the Ed Reports' core content review criteria. This is actually the process that we use for the first stage of curriculum review. And it also is what Ed Reports uses. So there are three gateways. And you, you have this as well as, I believe it's Penex B. So you can kind of see that in those gateways, they focus on three different components, thank you. Focus and coherence, rigor, and mathematical practices, and then teacher and student reports, so there is a rubric that goes with each of those criteria that was shared with teachers. And when they gave their feedback, go to the next slide. That feedback was overwhelmingly meeting expectations in all three of these gateways. It was, I think our lowest percentage was around seventy-five percent, but it was usually eighty and ninety percent of the teachers felt it met expectations in each of these three categories. And then one of the things that we did also ask after they reviewed their current curriculum was their, their thoughts on staying with Bridges. And overwhelmingly, again, teachers felt that it would be beneficial, not only for their students, but also for themselves to stick with the program. A lot of the feedback that we have heard about Bridges in mathematics from teachers, and it is because of the design of the program. It is built for teachers to learn just as much as students. And teachers have really been able to discover new strategies and visual models and have a better understanding of mathematics.
Ms. Tyndall, could you go back one slide too? I think you were ahead and
So this is what I was speaking of, is we asked, you know, if they had the option, would they move forward with Bridges? And right now, they're, in order to go from second edition to third edition, the company has a transition kit. And so we explained that to them and asked, that was one of the options. So it is a very similar program. And then the other option we offered to teachers would be to go to RFP. But we did make it clear that it would be pending approval of funding. So some of the enhancements from second edition to third edition, they, they have some minor changes. Scope and sequence, there's one big shift and it is in first grade. And they switched two of the units around. Other than that, the scope and sequence is pretty much identical. That would really help teachers because it would follow the same progression of their teaching currently. Also, the manipulators and components, they don't get any different ones, they use exactly the same from second edition. Just so you are aware, there are a few new tools. And then it is grounded in visual models and problem solving. And so that is another consistency from second edition to third edition. Some of the enhancements is a focus around equity. Really making sure that the opportunities within the program are culturally inclusive. Many of the, the examples that they give, they are trying to make sure that it is an example that all students can relate to. And it isn't based on your past experience or background. Also, the pedagogy, I would say, one of the things they did is they really simplified the overview, Bridges did have a lot to read. And I think they did a nice job of organizing that information so that teachers still could understand the mathematics, but not have to read quite as much to do that. Usability, this is probably the biggest adaptation between second and third. They really listened to teachers. And they simplified a lot of the directions, again, less reading, the binders got a little bit smaller. And they also made it one of the big things, if you've been in a school and seen Number Corner, Number Corner is daily workouts that they do. And it used to be two to three activities a day, they condensed that down, and so it's more manageable now. Assessments as well, those are more streamlined so that teachers have time to gather that information from teachers or students. So I just wanted to show you the Ed Reports. This is for third edition. I know a lot of people usually will ask, how did it rate? This is the K-2 Ed Report. And then if you want to show the next slide, it is three-five. And it is almost identical. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, questions, Mr. Tierney?
I would like to make a motion.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion that we send this to the curriculum committee for further review. We just started these new committees. Want to get people involved, this is a big spend. I disagree, I'm not an educator, but I've talked to a lot of sixth-grade math teachers and high-school math teachers that say that this math is not preparing them for higher-level math. I experienced that with my own kid, I can't help my kid with this math. So I just think it'd be good to get a committee, get teachers on there, get parents on there. This is a big spend, we have time, like you guys said, we have time.
Motion made to send it to the curriculum committee and seconded now, discussion?
Who seconded it?
Mrs. Landry, yeah.
I was about to second it, we were gonna agree on something.
All right, discussion, why do you agree with it, Mrs. Adams?
Because I believe new, anything new like this should, should be discussed at the committee level and see how everybody feels about that. And it's what we're gonna do with our committees, we're going to give them some good material to review and get back to us. So I think, not to delay it, but I just think it's important that we go send it to committee.
I would just, I guess I would just ask for clarification before the board votes on this. So there was a math committee of teachers that, that did, that did work to make this review. Is the role of the curriculum committee as you see it, is that to look at the process or is that to is that to change the recommendation of the work that has already been done? I just want to be clear on that, if it goes back to committee.
So is it to review the process that's outlined in policy?
Right, did they follow the process or do you not agree with their, their recommendation?
Okay, Mr. Tierney?
I just think the data, data-driven decisions, show us the data, show us the surveys, maybe do another survey with teachers, because those numbers, like how many teachers took the survey, out of how many teachers available, how many teachers were in sixth grade and high school that are actually gonna take in better surveys with, I mean, numbers, percentages with no backing, it's just numbers. So I would like to say, go through the data, go through the numbers, see if our math scores are higher or lower with Bridges. You know, all that, are we, are we, that would be what I think a committee would do, is look at the data, get the explanation, see if we approve and move forward.
I think part of it is timing, when would the committee be? Or we would want you to bring that to the committee.
So December's committee agenda has already been set. So there's a standing committee for December that has, that agenda's already full with AI policy. Are you saying then it would be the following committee meeting, which I believe is February? And again, are we reviewing the, the process that's stated in policy? Or are we communicating the findings of the, the review committee? And we have some answers to how many?
Two hundred seventeen teachers took the survey to give that data.
Out of?
That's a good question. I don't know the total of elementary. You were there and then you weren't there.
We can get that.
Okay, all right, is there a way of changing the agenda for the first meeting?
So the December, are you stating, flip it?
Yeah.
So we're really, we've worked on that AI policy, so it's a it's, the policy is direction and guidance for teachers as they navigate AI, which is a necessity. We really we want to move forward with that, we have that slated for the January school board meeting as a first read.
Okay.
Is that for the curriculum committee or the personnel policy committee? Because policy would go to a separate committee than curriculum, right?
So it's the AI, it's a new policy that is AI for, so it's a, it's more of a curriculum, teaching, it's teacher guidance. So it, it is a policy, but it's being covered under teaching and learning, so that's why we're bringing it forth for the academic piece, because it aligns with academics. So it doesn't really align with personnel and HR.
It's in weird spots.
Yep, so and we're gonna find that with this new design of our standing committees, that I bring a lot of policies forward, but yet they're not in the realm of HR, so that, that policy, like if we name that committee policy review, it's gonna have a ton of stuff and that may be the, yeah, it definitely won't have just personnel stuff on it. So I guess that's for the board's decision, but we really, our teachers need the guidance in use with AI, our kids are here with it, we need to give them what they need to appropriately, you know, apply.
So sending
If the parents know how to do the math.
Okay, so sending it to the February
Could we just do an extra meeting in November?
Or a special meeting?
Yeah, for the AI in November, maybe, because that sounds like, like you said, there's a lot to it and a lot of guidance that we need. And it'd be earlier. Am I hearing a special committee meeting for the academic committee in either a second meeting in December or a special meeting in November? Just to, to then move the AI policy?
I think just an extra meeting.
That meeting and this
Just add a meeting.
We're in a near final draft, I'm one of the co-authors for that AI policy and, and we're in a near final draft that we've submitted to administrators and other educators for a kind of a final review, so if it's, as long as it's not the next week, we can probably have it prepped if that's the one you choose to use a special meeting for. Okay, so we could do that in November. I do still have a, I'd want to make sure, if we could just talk a little bit more about what the expectation is at that curriculum committee, because work has been done by a committee and I just want to make sure that we're clear on what the committee, what the expect, are we expecting that committee to choose a different math program? Are we expecting that committee to review the, the work that was done by the committee to arrive at their decision and ask questions? And I, I guess I want, that's, that would be very helpful for us as we plan for this.
Mrs. Landry?
So I would like to go over the data from previous years at the, that committee. And also I'd like to see, I would like to hear the opinions of teachers on if they'd like to continue Bridges' math without the, the ifs hanging in the balance, you know, depending on board approval or whatnot. I'd like to just hear a straight answer, you know, what they feel on, how they feel on Bridges, without something hanging in the balance.
Okay, Mrs. Adams?
Yes, I would be interested in the data collected from the teacher feedback, just so we have a clear understanding. I think we're all probably gonna move in the right direction with this, but I just think we just need to see how, how they arrived at this and feel good about it when we, when we approve it.
We also have teachers right now exploring with some of the third edition material. I would like the approval to be able to invite some of them to that committee meeting so that you can hear real feedback from people using the materials.
Okay, so, yes.
In that survey, did you also, like I understand you interviewed the, or surveyed the people teaching the math, but like the next-level teachers, did you survey them, like sixth-grade? So sixth-grade's collecting these fifth graders that just got done with Bridges' math. And if, I talked to quite, not all of them, obviously, but I talked to quite a few and asked them, are they prepared for higher-level math when they come out of and they said, no, they don't know basic arithmetic, math facts. So they said one person decided that they didn't like memorization math, so the district doesn't do memorization math. But when you send your kids to private school, if my kids have been back and forth, they focus on traditional math with this on the back burner just so they can check the box. And those kids do very well, like as we can see at Lakeview, we have a lot of kids from private schools come in, they don't do math Bridges. Like, they do it to meet the box, but they, they, when my daughter went there, they came home with regular addition and subtraction, regular multiplication, division, burn it in their brain like we always did. And then they had the other stuff on the side. And that, that was looked at less important, but their math scores are higher, and I know like at Lance, they've shrunk in the, the advanced level math in middle school, we've gotten rid of the, we don't have as many classes for advanced math as we used to. I feel like we're not pushing kids, more kids might be passing with this math, barely. But I don't feel like we're pushing kids to higher-level math, and if you look at all the studies which I have, they go both ways on this. Precalculus is very important for college. Just to have precalculus, you will be successful in college. The NEA has one, a study on that. So I think like, we don't have a lot of kids even taking precalculus. I don't think this, I just want to see if this math is worth four hundred thousand dollars, if it's worth pushing forward with it. And if it is, and you guys can prove that and you can show the data and you can show the numbers that more kids are excelling, more kids are passing, then cool, we'll sign off on it, but if you can't show that, then we should really look at maybe a self-curriculum, you know, maybe our math teachers come up with something cheaper in the summer, anything, explore options, but for me, moving into committee was mainly just show us that it makes sense to spend this money on it with data.
If I, do you mind, could I?
Mr. Bryan had a question, and then if you'll
Yeah, thank you. I guess, I mean, I guess kind of piggybacking a little bit on what Bob was saying, one of the things I'm mostly interested in, and I appreciate the, the teacher feedback, but one of the things I was kind of hoping for a little bit more in the way of like student outcomes in terms of like their actual readiness for like middle school and like secondary and stuff like that, and getting them into those, you know, be able, you know, those higher-level math skills. And you know, I appreciate the emphasis on equity and the higher-order thinking skills, but you know, I've, I've gotten feedback from folks out in the community that like they can't understand it. And so I just want to make sure that like I'm very comfortable in, you know, like why this is, you know, this is the way we need to go. The other thing too, I mean, as somebody who also follows like everything going on in the legislature, if we're looking at, you know, I mean, wholesale change in the way we do math, same way we're doing Act Twenty, or Act Twenty with reading, it's, you know, we're, that's right around the pike, you know. And so if that's gonna require like a huge sea change in the way we deliver curriculum in this district, you know, will we have dropped four hundred thousand dollars for nothing, or like we just gotta, you know, change some things here and there, or like we're gonna have to like reevaluate, you know, so just I just want to make sure, you know, because, you know, it's so early days as far as like the legislation's concerned, like you know, I just want to make sure that, you know, after having had a set of eyes on it, not necessarily slowing it down, but you know, having had a chance to look at some data, looking at, you know, where things are going in the legislature, maybe, you know, because we are ahead of schedule, that, you know. have you have a chance to go a little more transparency on it?
Dr. Weiss?
Sorry, I thought you said price. One thing I I want to caution us against is this is a math resource, it's not the curriculum. Um, and there are many, um, there are other districts I came from um, use bridges, the other, actually, I'm thinking off the top of my head, two. Um, the report cards in those two districts, uh, be happy to bring that to the meeting because I think it's important. One report card was a ninety-three. Very high performing district that used bridges. The other one was less than that, used bridges. So I'd be very um, careful when we look at resources assigning that much weight to the resource. There is no perfect resource. There is a collection of math strategies. Um, actually, one of the previous districts I was in that had bridges agreed, wanted to renew it, it was probably just, it's so long ago, it was probably second edition, and then they looked to have supplemental. Um, they found the holes in the curriculum and we had supplemental um, curricular add-ons to im- to improve the instruction and the in the use of that, you know, some of the gaps that were present. So I guess I'd be very cautious in saying that it's the resource that's going to automatically take us to a new height. It's, we know that there's much more involved in that. We know that it's the teacher, it's the it's the student engagement. There's a whole bunch of other factors in that. So when we, when we, we should look at student achievement. Um, but we also need to look at it in a way that we don't assign all of the results to a particular resource. And we do need to look at other resources. In my opinion, as a former curricular director, we do need to look at ed reports because that is probably one of the most comprehensive um, review tools out there that reviews that resource to determine how well it hits the standards that are assessed on state tests. So I just want to make sure we have the full picture going into this review and that we don't um, say that it's the book's fault that the kids aren't learning. So I just want to make, I just wanted to caution us against that.
Can I, are those two districts you're talking about bringing to show, are they urban districts? Are they similar to us? Or are they?
And that's, that's kind of my point. Um, those are some of the other factors that we need to look at. One of them is a suburban district. One of them is a more urban district. But that's kind of, we have, there's a whole bunch of other factors. I wouldn't say it was bridges that made that other school uh, get a ninety-three on the report card. I wouldn't attribute the whole thing to that. There's a whole bunch of other factors that play there, and I wanted to make sure that as we look at, as we look at student achievement, that we don't assign it solely to the to the book that we're using.
I just think a huge factor in like reading, if parents actually read with their kids at home at night, our reading scores would go up. We know that. Math, if we can't help our students do their math in elementary level, I have to YouTube a video and I show my kid I do the math in two seconds and he gets that, but then we're sitting there drawing all these circles and in real life, like I'm sure Tarek doesn't, I bet if we gave a math bridges test to this entire room right now, most of us would fail. And all of us can do pretty good math. I bet Mr. Satter does, knows how to do math with facilities. I bet he couldn't do math bridges like.
Okay.
So we're taking up, well, you're taking apart away from the community, like I can't help my child do their math. We should look at that. That's a big piece, especially in a a district where we struggle like that already. If if these parents don't understand it, they're not going to be able to help. And that's all on the teachers, all on you guys, completely on the district.
I just want to address in the border, in the cover report, there are noted um, districts that are using bridges and many of them are in comparison to us, Madison, Green Bay, Big Five. Um, so you you can find that reference.
I've I've looked. It's it's like a point one five increase out of not doing, like, there's not a big, math bridges is not launching districts into a great math leaders of America, like India doesn't do this math, China doesn't do this math, the leading engineering countries are not doing math bridges.
Mr. Tierney, Dr. Price had a question too. Thanks.
No, I just wanted to say I I really respect our curriculum um, director and and our teachers and I'm very interested in this conversation. I think actually I'm subscribing to what um, Ms. Adams mentioned about just kind of the process. I think this is exactly the type of um activity that we should take up in a curriculum committee, not not to second guess your survey or anything, but more just to put these ideas out here. I just had a few. Uh, I do think it's very kind of crucial for supports for parents. Um, I'm quite aware as a parent. Um, my my kids do well in math, but uh, basically I am concerned that um, the interface, whatever we use is parent friendly and I'm I'm really keen on um, making sure that we have instructional coaches, teacher leaders that can help smooth that process over. Also, just I I I do maybe disagree a little bit with Bob. Um, I think students conceptual understanding is very important. So um, and I've been talking with my fellow math professors and trying to find out how they think about this, but but finally, um, it's in the right direction to have the culturally responsive teaching. As as our district changes, we have absolutely have to make sure that um, all of our kids are understanding, you know, what the expectations are to be uh, literate, I guess, and Carl stole my thunder too. We have to be watching what's happening with the science of math, right? And the math twenty, uh, that's coming up. So maybe this is a good time to, you know, have have the the meeting and and we could have a special meeting on the AI, which actually relates a little bit to how how AI is going to change how kids do math too. So I I don't think this is a bad thing to have a month to deliberate and have our curriculum committee meeting.
Okay, so the motion on the floor is to send this motion to the curriculum, this proposal to the curriculum committee to look at. Um, but we're unclear as to which curriculum committee, when it's going to meet.
We'll work on a date for the um, IA and we'll move this to the December one, I believe. Am I wrong on that?
I was just gonna say, we we have um, we have the curriculum committee, but we also added the personnel policy committee. So you could do AI in personnel policy and you could do this.
Would that bump anything, Kevin?
Hmm.
Okay, alright.
Alright.
And then that date is Monday, December first.
Monday, December first. Okay.
Now, here's where I'm going to agree with Bob. I think that it's actually appropriate for AI to be in the personal uh, and personnel and policy committee. These are significant policy issues that we're going to have to rest with. We are at our university and while it is a curriculum issue, I think it's actually more a policy um, concern.
So the, I'm sorry, Wendy, I
I'm sorry, I I just don't know the process of, could we also invite the curriculum committee to the personnel and review AI there because it is a blended?
Right.
Yes. You can do a joint committee as well.
Alright.
Yes.
We will work on sorting that out tomorrow morning. And then why don't, can we, can we work that out tomorrow morning at our leadership council meeting and then report back?
Absolutely. I think that would be a good conversation.
Alright, but the motion on the floor is to send it to the curriculum committee and they're working out the logistics of that. Alright, all in, is there any further discussion? Hearing, thank you. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. And thank you, ladies. And that brings us to the annual school safety law requirements. Mr. Heathcock?
And I believe Mr. Satter is joining as well.
Thank you, Mr. Satter. Sorry I missed you.
Uh, good evening. Uh, this item addresses the Wisconsin Safety Bill, which is created in uh, two thousand and eighteen. Um, it created the Office of School Safety and the Department of Justice. It's an annual review of our school um, emergency operation plan. It also addresses um, school violence, uh, threats with Alice drills approval and then also school uh, Alice training. So um, if you look at the handout we gave you, there are um, links to a lot of the information that um, has been uh, completed. Um, the emergency operation plan is this lengthy documents, a comprehensive report that addresses many items of school safety, um, tornadoes, fires, natural disasters, as well as safety concerns within the building. Um, and then there's also a abbreviated version that every school gets. It's tailored to that specific school. It has contact information, plans of addressing issues within a specific building. Um, we also um, in these uh, reports here, we document Alice drills that are completed every year. Last week, uh, we completed uh, every school. I think they have a couple of this, they did a couple yet this week, but uh, every school completed their Alice drills. And then the last thing is staff train, any new strain, uh, any new uh, people coming into the district will receive Alice training annually.
Questions, uh, Dr. Price?
Uh, I'm just going to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Alright, motion has been made and seconded. Um, now discussion, Mr. Brian?
Um, I note at the top of the uh, page seventy-one, um, I see that KUSD received two point one million in grant funding out of the um, hundred million appropriation from the school safety bill uh, for the last year. I'm assuming that's the stabilization grants. Is that right from the incidents that happened last year? Is that right?
So I think that grant money was two thousand and eighteen.
That was from the two thousand and eighteen.
Yeah, so we did some controlled entrances and some other safety stuff. There was some camera work that was done back then.
Okay. Was, but isn't there a stabilization grant where KUSD would have been able to receive money as a result of the um, the incidents that happened? I know I'm not crazy.
There is a grant that we're going to apply for. It was a, yes, we have not. We're kind of, we're kind of going through all those nine items that we approved July twenty-second. And that's one of the things on there. We're going to ask for that's, that's more like a hundred thousand dollars.
Okay.
That we're talking about it, if it, if it's even that much, we're, we're not even sure what we're allowed.
Can you remind us what it's going to be, what that's going to go for?
Yeah, we looked at, we talked about um, some uh, possible door buzzers. Uh, there's different, different uh, items that are out there. And then we wanted to do, if you remember the situation at Roosevelt, um, we wanted to improve camera access. And so one of the things that happened that day was uh, you couldn't really see the person they were standing, there was a hu, the sun was right in your eye when you were looking at him, the kid was facing the other way. So we want to add a second angle. And then we want to add a monitor in each office and then some more buzzer door things to help people manage the three doors that are often involved in, two to three doors that are often involved in the uh, controlled entrances.
Gotcha. I knew I wasn't imagining things. I just wanted to.
Other questions? Okay, motion on the floor. Um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you. Next, we have the Head Start Semiannual Report.
Thank you. Rhonda Lopez is here to help with questions if you have any. Um, this is a reoccurring report. We do this twice a year. You you remember it coming forward before. Uh, the report provides an update on, this report repid, uh, provides an update on uh, the progress towards meeting federal performance standards for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. So we're, it kind of looks back. Um, last year, the program exceeded uh, enrollment requirements. We served three hundred and sixty students across seven sites. The program um, is in the middle of going through a multi-year effort to align with uh, po, new policy, new federal Head Start standards and is preparing for uh, an upcoming federal monitoring review. Family engagement uh, in our Head Start program remains strong. Hundred percent of our families completed partnership agreements. Uh, child outcomes demonstrated significant gains in literacy, cognition, and social and emotional goals. You can kind of look on page eighty-seven of your report, there's some charts that kind of show the progress we've made. One particular area that stood out that Mrs. Lopez pointed out to me was uh, social emotional goals. Kids started out in our program at sixty-eight percent meeting their goals and by the end of the spring, they were up to eighty-nine percent.
Questions, uh, Mr. Brian?
Um, thanks for, you know, your regular updates before the board. This is all very good information. Um, just a quick question, um, with the federal government shutdown, do you anticipate any sort of like complications of like program delivery or anything like that in the coming year?
That's a very good question. So fortunately, since we are in a school district, we have a fund uh, that we are able to pay anything that would, we would need to for this school year. Our date uh, of our new grant will be July one. So as long as everything opens back up by then, we will have no interruption in anything. There are programs across the country that will, but we fortunately will not.
Knock on wood.
Any other questions? And, yes, Mrs. Adams?
Uh, not a question. I just want to emphasize uh, for the viewing public that enrollment as of June twenty twenty-five, um, the Head Start program has three hundred and forty-five students enrolled that exceeds the federal requirement of three hundred and thirty for this program year. And then an additional fifteen students were served under the state funded Head Start supplemental grant, which brings it to a grand total of three hundred and sixty students. I've been following this program for many years and we never had that many um, children enrolled in Head Start. So this is all um, thank you, uh, Ms. Lopez, for your leadership and your uh, love for this program because I always wondered why we could not fill this program, like what are we doing wrong? There's kids out there. Why are they not enrolled in this program? And um, the last few years, we we're at capacity. It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, again, thank you. Um, this is not action item. Alright, so this is an informational item. So if there's no other questions, um, thank you and thank you so much for all you do. Alright, next we have our official Third Friday at Roman Report.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Um, this will recap in summary uh, fashion, the uh, uh, recent September pupil count day, the first of two of them that we capture the students throughout Kenosha Unified. Um, this is more of a graphical presentation that accompanies the much larger report that's been posted online and also included in your packet. We're going to spend just a little bit of time going over the uh, local population and how the birth rate still continues to be the primary impact for the decreased enrollment. So it's not so much a loss of students, it's just a, a, a higher than expected um, uh, decrease in births over the last um, almost two decades now. And what those enrollment trends are, how they relate to our cohorts as they produce uh, student enrollments across grade levels and then other factors as well as the um, uh, continued update on the rightsizing impact from the last two years and the um, closure of the schools and redistricting of our elementary and middle school boundaries. So basically, the the general statement is that aside from the declining birth rate being the primary reason, we do have uh, impact by continued exits to boundary competitors as well as open enrollment disparity and homeschool participation. Homeschool, as you'll see on the chart, was basically uh, significantly increased from prior years, um, based on the COVID impact from five years ago. Going back over thirty years, though, you can see where we had a peak in about fifteen years ago. Uh, and then uh, it kind of mirrors the decline over the last fifteen years as what the increase was for the prior years before that. In the two thousand and twenty school year, that's more of the impact of the COVID, but uh, um, drop in students and participation, a lot of that was at the earlier grade levels, um, that a lot of people chose to go homeschool, which was fine. Uh, or other educational alternatives to service their children. But you can see that the trend basically caught itself back up the next year and subsequently after that. When we look at the number of births and how they relate to our our kindergarten population as one of the primary enrollment projection pieces, the top line is the number of births in the area. We peaked at about two thousand eight and nine, when there was nearly two thousand births within our boundary area. And at this time, uh, when we future forecast that against our kindergarten, you could see that uh, aside from um, that COVID impact, which which is now at grade five, um, it it mirrors very closely along that trajectory. We thought we were at uh, an area of expected kind of normalization with these smaller decreases. Unfortunately, um, a few months back, we got the preliminary projection from the state of what the two thousand uh, and and twenty-four birth numbers were. Uh, and and it's a near ten percent single year drop. So that's, that's on our forecast, obviously, to watch. Um, that would hit us in the two thousand twenty-nine, thirty year. Um, and as we've seen, this is, this declining birth rate is not a Kenosha or southeastern Wisconsin uh, occurrence. This is happening all over the uh, nation to various degrees, but it is impacting everybody. And not, not just the United States, but more of a global population as well. Um, we do have other uh, kind of what we call these little drops rather than these, these kind of normalized uh, pieces as well. So we So we, we had work on this enrollment piece as it comes through. When we work to capture them, you can see by the grade level pieces where those COVID and declining birth rate drops impacted us. And then subsequently, what the cohort levels used to be. So whereas you could look at grade five, it used to be near sixteen hundred. And now this year, it's just above twelve hundred. And kind of keep this in mind where, where these still take continuing drops for like kindergarten or even grade one for the decreased participation at those early grade levels. Mired that with middle school, you can see that the declining birth rate greatly impacted them the last couple of years. And then it kind of leveled off. But as you saw, grade five is now down here. So that'll become the next year's for grade six and then enroll itself through. So even though it looks like middle school kind of leveled off for the last two years, we know what's going to be coming as far as that enrollment piece. And then obviously for the high school grade levels, this year, the, the big drop for the declining birth rate, single year one is at grade ten. And then the purple line represents grade twelve, where we do have a small percentage of students that remain with us for a fifth year and potentially a sixth year or seventh, depending on circumstances, that have legal rights, free education. When we look at that cohort average going out, you can see that we were closer to sixteen hundred, even less than ten years ago. And even going past the COVID years in the last five, we only spent three years in the, in the thirteen hundred range. And now for the first time in, in well over thirty years, our cohort average is below thirteen hundred. So this, this relates itself not only to our primary resources, which are educators to service the students in the classroom, but then it goes down to curriculum levels, other supportive pieces for resources that we have to then manage the district, technology and, and other areas. When we track our local exits, those are, those would be those within our boundary area. You'll notice that there was a significant increase. Now, this would relate to the expansion or the last spring authorized expansion of a local independent charter school that basically equates to that increase in there. The majority of our local exits happen during the summer when those schools open up their seats and, and obviously process their graduates or, or lower grade levels. If they are a school that's just limited to elementary or elementary and middle school grade levels, we do have a very small number then throughout the school year that would transfer over. But you can see that the, the spike went over basically the majority of the summer months. And, and so that difference right there is basically the addition of that expansion for the independent charter school. We do track that and we do monitor what their enrollments are or all the others just for our enrollment projections. But that is a known point that did impact our, our population this, this past, or this past month for the count day. As far as open enrollment, we've been pretty consistent as far as students that are coming into the district and southeastern area. But this is the disparity that was earlier mentioned. And, and we did hit a new high as well as far as students that transfer out. One of the bigger ones was a fifteen percent increase, for example, to Central High School, just to west of the interstate on the western portion. And, and so that attributed to part of that large increase that's out there. And as they continue to lose enrollments, as what, as what other districts do, that, that heavily promote their open enrollment opportunities, they just add more seats that the board authorizes for open enrollment. Thus, have any greater chance to potentially take students from non-resident districts. When we look at the homeschool data, and this basically covers the COVID years. Prior to this, we were like in the three hundred, three hundred and fifty range for our population. And you can see what the percentage was of our KUSD enrollment as well as with the state figure. Now, we don't have the state figure for this year, but you can see that in twenty-four, twenty-five, we basically mirrored that percentage with the state as they've kind of hovered around the three percent to three and a quarter percent. And, and we did spike out and match that during that primary COVID year. We were on a slight trending downward for that participation. Again, that's not to say it's good or bad. This is just to track where the students go that we're aware of. And as of right now, though, it's only at about two and a half percent. So it should land probably at about two point seven or two point eight for the district as, as parents could choose to educate their students through the homeschool option at any point during the year. We just get notification and then process that accordingly and monitor it through the state database. As far as our student ethnicity breakdown, this is, this is pretty consistent with prior years where you can see the, the different percentages that are attributed to Kenosha Unified. The, the historical chart for the last six years is included in the report. In regards to the, the couple of points that we just want to mention regarding to the board's directive related to the right sizing from a couple of years ago. This was pre-right sizing and one of the reasons why we had to go through with it as far as the utilization for our schools and to get to that goal of the, you know, mid to low eightieth percentile. Even, even as we progressed with this, with that declining birth rate, as well as those other enrollment impact areas. You can see, still see that for the boundary elementary in those schools, we're still in the low eightieth percentile. High school unfortunately is going to see a continual two to three percentage drop each year. Overall, for the boundary schools, as, as obviously that major birth rate drop is only halfway through the, halfway through that. And that averages about a hundred and fifty or so students each year just for that grade level alone. I know it's a little bit hard to, hard to read, but this presentation will be shared in the board report, the post, the post meeting as well. This is pre-right sizing, what the average was in the schools that still continued at this point. And then where they aligned, you can see it's a much tighter alignment. So, so we now have a more of a true realization of what those boundary enrollments are at. If you remember, when the decision was made to close those schools, the district also granted any student at the elementary level that was in grade four, that if their boundary changed, they were given the opportunity to stay there for grade five. And then subsequently, in middle school, if they were in grade seven, they were given the opportunity to stay as well, which a lot of students, we had a couple hundred students take advantage of that. So that was last year's kind of enrollment portion. This year is more of a true reflection of what those boundaries are. So again, much more of a tighter alignment and a, and a much more efficient utilization of our staffing and resources. And then when we look at the middle school, boundary schools, the four that remain for that, as well as the three high schools. So, so again, you see the, you see the greater disparity pre-right sizing and then the tighter alignment post-right sizing. And then with, without any right sizing impact changes for the high schools, they will, to various degrees, you can see that these are significant drops. Trumper, for example, almost a six percentage drop just in, just in two years. Or even Indian Trail. And, and Indian Trail will, with the removal of the specific academies moving forward as that rolls up, that'll, that'll have a greater percentage drop as well. And then ultimately, then when we look at our class averages that we've tracked for the, for the last several years, this decrease was basically attributed to the administration's directive that to support the Act Twenty program and, and removal of any multi-age options for K through three that allowed for dedicated staffing at those grade levels. Ultimately led for some, led to some additional staff that were necessary for some schools. And so that reduced the overall K-five class average. But we did see drops. Now, these are just the academic ones and, and this is more of a chart in reflection of the current board policy. So. Any questions that anybody might have related to the report or the charts?
Questions for Mr. Kekler. No motion is necessary for this. Thank you, Mr. Kekler. Next, we have the change in the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five adopted budget. Mr. Hamden.
Okay, hello again. Promise to try to move through some of these items. This first one is what I call more of a housekeeping item. This is more cleaning up, finishing out the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. State statute officially requires the board to take action and approve by two-thirds of majority vote to officially change last year's adopted budget. So now that we've closed out fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, what you're doing is formally acknowledging all those changes that happened throughout the year that qualified into a official change of the budget. And we kind of go through, we detail out the activities and summarize them. But what triggers these kinds of changes throughout the year are changes in Wolfher coding. So that's the required DPI format that we're required to use. So if there's a change in what's called function, which is kind of the subject area of the expense, if it changes within those two digits, we're required to bring it up here for formal change. And then, of course, there is a class one notice that we have to publish in the newspaper within ten days of this formal board action. So we're asking you to approve that. All honesty, this is the budget portion of twenty-four, twenty-five, not the actual portion. So it really doesn't make much difference, but this is a formality.
Okay. Any questions, Mr. Hamden, or any motions of move to approve?
I'll second.
Whoa, okay. Give it to somebody. Mrs. Adams and Mrs. Landry. Okay. Mrs. Adams with the motion, Mrs. Landry with the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye. Thank you. And next?
Okay, next, now we're going to switch gears. This is kind of blending twenty-four, twenty-five into twenty-five, twenty-six. We alluded to some of this during the annual meeting of electors and that budget presentation. But this is the official formal request for the school board to approve carryover funds that we received in twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year. Did not expand. So we're asking, and those funds are now sitting in our reserves, we're asking for permission to use those in twenty-five, twenty-six. Historically, KUSD has prohibited the automatic carryover of discretionary funds, but there are several things that were required to carry over. And most of them, you see, this request totals about three million dollars. So this would be asking the board for permission to use essentially three million dollars of reserves that are only there because of these funds. Most of it, two point five million here, are the required grant funds. We detail out what those are. Common school library funds is a big one. The mental health support grants is a big one. That's nearly a million of this. Special ed transition grants, career and tech ed, education incentive grants. Several of these, we don't even receive until June of the prior fiscal year. So we carry the funds forward so they can be used for their intent. Donations and mini-grants kind of follow the same thing. Mostly, the biggest numbers here are the education foundation grants. So when they're awarded to schools for a specific project, it might be late in the year. They might be planning to do something in the beginning of the next school year. So we want to make sure that those funds are used for what they were given. Theater co-curricular is another piece where we allow them to retain the revenues from ticket sales and it goes right back into the program. Charter schools, remember we're down to one official charter school that we have in our district. And this kind of gives some of the history of how the accounting changed for that so that they, each charter school had a portion of fund balance reserves that was dedicated to them. They are no longer carryover requests, but this is the time of year when we actually show you what those balances are. And it's the bottom of the attachment here. I will zoom in. Just give a quick recap. So we also retained our former charter schools because we're tracking the accounting of them. So we no longer have Brompton. We have Ruth Harmon, which was the combination of dimensions of learning in Brompton. But we retained what their balances were. So Ruth Harmon's now fund balance, if you will, at the end of last year, as of June thirtieth, is here. Five hundred twenty-two thousand. Lakeview K eight, here, four hundred twenty. And Harborside unfortunately is overspent. So that's another issue that we'll be dealing with. But as far as the reserves go, it's spent and then some. So that does it for the carryover request. So we're asking your approval to incorporate these in, to allow the spending in twenty-five, twenty-six.
Now I'll move to approve.
Mrs. Landry.
I'll second.
All right. Motion made by Mr. Bryan. And what was the amount?
Three million forty-two thousand six hundred ninety-eight dollars.
Okay, and seconded by Mrs. Landry. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion passes. Brings us to the formal adoption of the budget.
This is a big one. Okay. So promise it's not a hour and a half long presentation like we did in September, but I do want to go through the sections of this report. Not going to read it word for word by any means, but it's very important that we, we hit on some of these topics. So you remember, we did the public hearing back in September and we did our best guess to what enrollment would be. We did our best guess to what our revenue limit numbers would be, what the state aids would be. And then we tried to project what the tax levies would be. So just for comparison, back in September, we thought initially the tax levy would be around ninety-three million point two. So I'll show you what we actually get to here in a little bit. The budgeting process between September and October, there's a lot of things that happen. So the key components from DPI, student membership, equalization aid, property values, the tax levies that we're able to certify, the private school voucher information, we now know that and we incorporate that into our formulas. And then things like state aid for exempt purple, personal property, which has a significance this year that I will also discuss in detail. And then there's staffing costs. So when we're in September, we have a lot of vacancies and we talked about that. HR is right in the middle of their hiring season, hiring back, people that were on letter of appointment, all kinds of things. So we do our best. We plug in what we have to in September to give you a preliminary budget estimate. But now we have as close to actual as, as we can get. Student enrollment, you just heard from Mr. Kekler, the recap on enrollment. For revenue limit purposes, remember, we, we work on a three-year rolling average rather than just that year's Third Friday headcount. Third Friday headcount is a piece of the formula. But when we look at the overall loss, it's a significant four hundred thirteen FTE for revenue limit purposes. And then an average loss of three hundred twenty-eight FTE. And that gets into the current year versus the base year loss ratio. All said and done, we also trigger a declining enrollment exemption of three point eight million dollars that we're able to take advantage of in the revenue limit formula. I want to pause there for a second because that declining enrollment exemption, I know we've talked about it several times, but this is a parachute to help you glide into your new reality. But when we stabilize enrollment, we lose this. When you have three consecutive years and we're no longer in a declining state, this safety blanket goes away. I wish I knew when that decline would end. We just heard from Mr. Kekler. It's still there. I don't see the end in sight and the severity of it can be debated. But we don't know when this decline will stop yet. So state aid for exempt personal property. For those of you that were around last year, there was a change last year where this was expanded. And just to remind you kind of what it is, back in two thousand eighteen, seventeen, nineteen biennial budget, the state exempted or allowed businesses, for example, to not count certain pieces of their machinery, forms, patterns, tool and die, think of like machines, manufacturing. They allowed them to exclude them from their property value so they wouldn't get taxed on them. That hurts municipalities and that hurts taxing districts because that reduces your tax base, reduces the amount that you can receive for tax levy. Well, then there was this law that basically compensated taxing jurisdictions for that loss of revenue. That acts like state aid under our revenue limit formula. At least it did until last year. Last year, due to Wisconsin Act Twelve in two thousand twenty-three, they expanded the definition. So they allowed even more things to be counted as exempt. But the legislators kind of made a mistake and they didn't specify in their original bill that it would also be under the revenue limit. So last year only, we received notice from DPI that it does not count under the revenue limit and it basically acted like an additional million dollars of revenue to us outside of the levy. And if you remember, I speculated, that doesn't feel right. And I think they're, they would change it in the next budget and they sure did. So in the next budget, they caught it, they cleaned it up. So now that additional million dollars still comes to us as additional aid, but it's back under the revenue limit formula. It's great. We're not complaining. That's tax relief. But that effectively took a million dollars of revenue away from us as compared to last year. Does that make sense, everybody? You'll see it graphically here in a little bit. So this is one of those where I wish I wasn't right, but it happened. Here's a comparison of our state aid changes. And I will zoom in because it is a lot of numbers. But last year, we compare, remember, October fifteenth is a key date. That's the date we get certified aid. Our equalization aid last year was one hundred fifty-four and a half million dollars. At the annual meeting, I projected one hundred forty-five point five. This year's October certification is one hundred forty-five point one. So the change from last year is what really matters. We're losing nine point four million dollars of state aid. That doesn't mean, again, loss of revenue limit authority. That means loss of state aid, which we're gonna hit on what that triggers, and it's essentially increased tax levy. That's a six point one percent change. From our annual meeting, we were less than point three percent variance, so we're happy about that. High poverty aid is something that we used to receive for districts that are fifty-one percent or more free and reduced lunch. Notice all these zeros? So in the previous biennium and continuing today, the high poverty aid is still in the law. It's just not funded. So there's nothing to give. So we qualify for nothing. State aid for exempt computers, this is something, again, similar to the personal property aid. Manufacturers can claim their computer machinery as exempt from taxes. We get compensated for that. So here's where you see the difference. Last year, we had this million dollars outside of revenue limits. This year, it just literally moved up to here. So now here's where we're going to talk a little bit about the important stuff. State aid equalization formula is very, very complicated, and it's no one single variable. Each district of the four hundred and twenty-one districts in the state impact this formula, impact our share of the formula. That nine point four million dollar loss in equalization aid is primarily due to the fact that in the twenty-five, twenty-seven state budget, they allowed for three hundred twenty-five dollars per member growth. So they allowed all of us to increase our revenue limits, but didn't fund it. So the equalization aid amount at the state level was frozen and remains frozen for the next year of the biennium too, by the way. That amount is frozen, so they're saying everybody can have more money, but they're not going to fund it. So go get it from the taxes. And I'm gonna take a little pause here and kind of transition to a little example that we put together to the significance of this shift. When people see their property taxes this year, and one of the speakers mentioned it, the community voted no in the referendum, but there will still be a property tax increase when they open up their bills in December because of this. And I want to try to explain that further and kind of use a real life example. This is oversimplifying, but hopefully this helps conceptualize. So remember, revenue limit authority, we're gonna repeat a couple things here. Complex formula, but the main factors are enrollment and per pupil amounts that are determined from the state budget. That determines, remember the analogy of the cup. That determines, are you drinking out of a twelve ounce cup? Are you drinking out of a sixteen ounce cup? Conceptually. Your formula determines the volume. Now, the first pour is your state aid. So you go through your revenue limit formula. They have the equalization aid formula. You pour in everything you get from state aid, and then you top it off with property taxes. So think of that again as the cup. Pouring in state aid first, whatever you have room left is what you're allowed to tax for. Revenue limit minus your general aid equals what you are allowed to property tax levy. These are our numbers. So these are last year and this year. So one hundred fifty-six million last year in aid, one hundred forty-seven million this year in aid. Percentage-wise, sixty-eight percent versus sixty-three percent. So there's your tax levies. So your tax levy, seventy-four million to eighty-eight million, thirty-two million to, or thirty-two percent to thirty-seven percent. Now bear with me. Let's do a real life family scenario. So I want you to meet the teenage daughter. Teenage daughter is still a dependent, still in school, so not quite old enough to get a full-time job, so still depends on her family. Still lives with the family, drives a family car. Still has a lot of expenses associated with her. Doesn't have her own car, but still drives the family car. She needs insurance, gas money, maintenance. Of course, has a cellphone. Of course, eats with her friends, goes out to eat, and does online random shopping. She has a monthly budget. She's thinking she needs an allowance. Meet the dad. Father says, you know what? I agree. You have a lot of expenses associated with you every month, and you need to start learning how to budget. So you shall be allowed to spend two hundred thirty dollars per month. Keyword is allowed. But I will only give you a hundred and fifty-six dollars a month. You are allowed to get the other seventy-four dollars from your grandmother. So here's the pitch. Daddy said I'm allowed to get up to seventy-four dollars per month from you for my allowance. Grandma says, you know what? I'm on a fixed income and a tight budget, but I can do this for you. I'm gonna make it work. Now the SpongeBob, one year later. Teenage daughter's doing the math here, saying, you know what? Prices have gone up on everything. I'm buying the exact same things that I bought before, and I could afford them before, but now I'm running out of money every month. Something's up. Of course, daddy, I need a bigger allowance. Dad thinks about it and says, you know what? Daughter, that is called inflation. And I agree. So we should increase your allowance by five dollars per month, so let's make it two hundred thirty-five. But I will only give you a hundred forty-seven dollars per month, and I will allow you to get the rest from your grandmother. Thinking about it again, so daddy said I can increase my allowance by five dollars to make it two hundred thirty-five per month, but he's only gonna give me a hundred forty-seven dollars. That's nine dollars less per month than he was giving me. So now grandma, I will need eighty-eight dollars per month from you, which is a fourteen dollar increase. Grandma does not like that. So she's angry. She's, this is ridiculous. Your spending's out of control, but you're buying the same exact things that you were. And grandma, rightfully so, says, I can't afford a nineteen percent increase in your allowance when my own cost of living adjustment was only two and a half percent. So grandma is rightfully upset. So sorry, grandma, it's not our fault. Like, the floor was taken out from underneath us. What we were receiving from the state went away, and we're forced to ask the taxpayers to cover the rest. So now in our little skit, the daughter, that's us. The dad, that's the state that sets the allowable limits and determines how much aid they're going to give us every month. And of course, grandma's the taxpayer. So I hope that helps kind of conceptualize what we're dealing with here.
Questions for Mr. Hamden?
I had a little fun with it, so bear with me.
Actually, grandpa has all the money now.
Yeah, grandpa's not around anymore. Yeah, that went real dark, real fast. Well, let's continue with the board report.
Alright.
So state equalization aid, you understand, again, how if this gets reduced from year to year, you will need more property taxes to fill your cup. And this just isn't, not a KUSD issue. This is a statewide issue. In fact, this is a repeat of those numbers. I did an analysis now on the October fifteenth state aid across districts. Four hundred twenty-one districts in the state, three hundred and one of them got decreased state aid. That's seventy-one and a half percent of the districts in the state. Decreased state aid, likely to see increased taxes because of that. Where do we fall? This is ranges. So red is a decrease, green is increased, yellow's no change. Just for conceptualizing, did ranges, so by five percent increments. Seventy-two districts lost between ten and five percent, and we're right in there. Of course, percentage is proportionate. So for us, six point one percent is nine point four million dollars. That might be a couple hundred thousand dollars to a smaller district, but still proportionate change and shift onto their tax levies. Other notable items in the state budget, that three hundred twenty-five dollars per pupil is locked in for the next two years, which is good and bad, as we talked about. It's good that we know what it'll be, and we're thankful for the increase, but three hundred twenty-five dollars is a fixed dollar amount and is still not keeping up with the inflationary increases. So now we'll talk about the general fund. So as it stands right now in the proposed budget, it does present as an unbalanced budget in which expenditures are projected to exceed the revenues by about three million dollars. So that's what you would call a structural deficit. Also, the carryover authority that we just approved spending, when we look at that, that's in addition to this. This is prior to that. So remember that. So when we get to the end of the fiscal year, this is what we're projecting without carryover, that we would be short three million dollars. However, when we talk about staffing and vacancies, also analyzing all of the district-funded operational FTEs. What I mean by that is our general fund, Fund Ten, and our special education Fund Twenty-Seven, positions that are not funded by a grant, that are funded by the district. We look at those positions and say, how many are we budgeting for? Because we've authorized them to be filled. And then how many are actually filled, and what's the difference? So that's what we call a vacancy rate. You can see separated by group and fund how many FTEs we are budgeting for and how many we actually have filled or have somebody assigned to it. Think of this like buying a ticket to a sporting event. This is the seat. How many people are actually filling the seats? So if we get down to the point on this slide, we're showing almost a ninety-seven percent fill rate, but three percent, three point two, three percent vacant. So we're banking on that three point two, three percent vacancy because we're talking about millions of dollars on salary. So three percent does become a significant number to cover that three million dollar deficit that we're showing on paper. Pausing there for a second. Is that making sense, everybody? Okay. And then we show you everything to in Appendix D, all the grant-funded positions, all positions that are funded, and we show the fill versus authorized, so the vacancy rate. And then fund balance. So this just came up in the Head Start discussion when Mr. Bryan asked, you know, do we anticipate any interruption in the operations? This is part of the reason I want to commend the board for being strong in making sure that we have adequate reserves, because this is how there's going to be no interruption. Because we front that money for the Head Start operation, and if we have to wait to get those reimbursements or drawdowns from the federal government, we need to tap into cash reserves in order to do that. So luckily, we are in a good position where our policy, we are over that threshold. We don't have to do the million dollar budgeted surplus. In fact, we're on the other side of that. Remember, we're three million deficit. We are able to avoid short-term borrowing again for the third consecutive year. But I do need to point out to you guys, if everything is spent, if the vacancies, for whatever reason, did not come through, there would be an impact on the fund balance. I am confident, based on the vacancies and the analysis, that that won't happen. But full disclosure and transparency, I have to show you what it looks like. And then, of course, the fund balance will go down further for the carryover funds. There's two sides to that, though. So we will receive funds again in twenty-five, twenty-six that I'm sure people won't spend, and we'll be carrying over into the next year. So that will also be offset. But technically, that three million that you just approved will be planned use of fund balance reserves. That's the three point zero four million here. This is just showing you what that would look like graphically, what those balances would project to be. And now let's get to the certification of tax levy. So here is our current year, and we compare to prior year. And yes, there is an overall thirteen million dollar increase in the tax levy. So remember why? Those numbers that I used in that little skit, that, those were our real numbers. So I know some people say, two hundred thirty dollars a month. Well, that was to relate it to our numbers that we're using. So two hundred thirty million dollars revenue limit authority increased to two hundred thirty-five million revenue limit authority. So that capacity grew. And then the state aid decreased by over nine million dollars. So that's why we see increase in tax levy of about thirteen point one million dollars here. And it's not because anything happened or changed with that service. You see, that's relatively no change. Community service levy, no change. All the change was in the general fund because of the decrease in equalization aid. That does equate to a net increase of overall sixteen percent tax levy increase. Now, that's not a sixteen percent increase in the mill rate, because remember, mill rate is a formula. Mill rate is your tax per every thousand dollars of property value. Our property values also went up. At the annual meeting, we projected that they would go up seven percent. And when they were certified in October first, they went up seven point zero two percent. So we were dead on on the property values. Increasing that property value number allows us to spread the tax levy over a bigger tax base. So you see a mill rate increase that's mitigated. Here's where we get to mill rates. So the total mill rate this year, five dollars and fifty-six cents per every thousand dollars of property, that is a eight point four four percent increase, not a sixteen percent increase because it's mitigated by the seven percent increase on tax base, on property. We give you all kinds of attachments, showing you the history of that. But bottom line is what we're getting down to here is we are looking for multiple motions. So these are all individual board actions. We're looking for approval formally of the District Twenty-five, Twenty-six budget using this motion. We are looking for a direction, a directive to publish the required notice. We are looking for approval on the tax levy and the different components of it using this motion. And then we are looking for a directive from the board to the clerk to notify our municipalities, as we're legally required to do, of their portion of the tax bill. And that's what this motion does.
Board members, the motions are outlined on page one hundred and nineteen of your package.
Like to make a motion?
Like to make a motion? I move that the Twenty-Five, Twenty-Six Budget for the Kenosha Unified School District as presented for all funds showing expenditures, other revenues and tax levies in summary be adopted as outlined in Attachment B and in the accompanying format required by the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction in Attachment C.
Second.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any question, discussion? Yes, question?
Um, just help me understand this. So we were talking, you were talking a little bit about general fund and fund balance. The two point nine million deficit that you were alluding to. Say we were in a hundred percent, no vacancies, whatever, highly unlikely, but say we were in a situation where it was like deficit spending. Would you be concerned about that, knowing that we're still above like the policy levels that we have set for the fund balance? I mean, assuming like we're not doing this for every year time immemorial, but like, like.
I am concerned because structurally, the the change, if it was temporary and there was like light at the end of the tunnel where I said, okay, you know what, our enrollment took a hit, but we're going to be growing in the near future, or if I had confidence that the state budget was going to do something significant and change, I would be less concerned.
Okay.
But knowing what I know already for the second year of the biennium, number one, three hundred twenty-five is what we're stuck with on per pupil increase, just like last year. We will not have the big shift in special ed aid again that we did in the first year of the biennium. Remember, that went from thirty-three to forty-two, big jump first year. But then second year is a three percent jump. And that's dependent on, it's still some certain, not some sufficient, so it might not even be that full increase. So those are the things that concern me, and then the enrollment decline continues to erode, so that also concerned me. So three million alone, if it decreased, would it, I think, would it trigger another action like short-term borrowing? I don't think so. Not just that three million in and of itself, but it's going to start doing other things like reduce interest income. So we're probably looking at that as a reduced revenue for twenty-six, twenty-seven. And then on top of that, we're talking about other things like the controlled entrance funding. And one of the likely scenarios that we would fund that with would be planned use of reserves, still doing a borrowing so we can mitigate the impact, like spread it out over ten years.
Right.
But we'd still be talking about taking potentially a hit every year of maybe a million dollars. So though, all those things that are adding up are in the wrong direction.
Okay. That's good information. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Hearing? Okay, I, Mr. Tierney, okay, so he did. All right, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Number two. Mrs. Landry?
Ayes, Sabrina Landry moved that the board direct the administration to prepare a Class One legal notice to be published publicly within ten days of the adoption as shown in Attachment C.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Number three.
Motion to approve. I Todd Price moved to approve the property tax levy to be collected from the municipalities within the school district in the amount of eighty million, six hundred fifty-six thousand, eight hundred ninety-two dollars for the general fund, twelve million, three hundred, eighteen thousand, seven hundred and sixty-six dollars for the debt service fund, and one million, five hundred thousand dollars for the community service fund.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Adams. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor. Yes, Mr. Todd.
Yes, just a quick comment. I just wanted to thank you, Todd, for your transparency on, you know, how antiquated our school funding formula is. We talk about this just about every month and, you know, I know this is going to come across as a big shock to a lot of taxpayers when they see this in December, but, you know, this is not anything that any one school board member did or anyone administrator did or anything that KUSD did, but we're operating within a very, a very poor system and, you know, I wish we could see, could have seen a little bit more reform at the state level, but, you know, thank you for bringing the issues to light when it comes to school finance.
Thank you. Dr. Price, were you going to say something about private schools?
Just to acknowledge what my colleague just mentioned and also that several of our state legislators have acknowledged as much, they're saying, don't blame the school board.
Okay. All right, any further discussion here, hearing, yes? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. And number four.
Ayes, Sabrina Landry moved that the board direct the district clerk to certify and deliver the board-approved tax levy to the clerk of each municipality on or before November tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Yes, Mrs. Landry.
What would happen if we didn't approve it?
A tax levy?
I'm just curious.
You'd miss out on about ninety million dollars of revenue.
All right, noted.
However, I'm going to hand my gavel to Mr. Bryan for just a moment. I just want to ask you a question. I know there is, there are some other districts and other municipalities who have directed the legis, the municipality to put all the information on the tax information, including what goes out to the private schools. Now, one of the things that you mentioned at the annual meeting of electors was the fact that we get money from the state and it's flow-through for the private schools, but then we have to supplement that?
Yeah.
Would you explain?
Attachment A three in the board packet to kind of give you an update on the final revenue limit numbers. So let me, let me explain some of that. So that revenue limit calculation contains some pieces that are passed through that are not actually going to benefit us. One of those that does benefit us is the energy efficiency exemption. So that you see about six point three million dollars of revenue limit authority that we're allowed to increase revenue limit and then pay it out on debt service. So yes, this is increasing our revenue limit authority, but it's not for operations. It's for those energy efficiency projects that we borrowed money and we did, you know, think of Bradford, think of Trumper, think of the middle schools that we did, all kinds of energy efficiency projects. This is what's paying that back. So that, that one's in blue. That is part of these numbers and we're grateful for. Then there's pieces that are in here that don't benefit us. Private school vouchers. So the regular ed private school vouchers total up to six point one million dollars here. And then the special ed vouchers, one point four. So add these two numbers together, you've got seven point five million dollars worth of vouchers that we have to levy for, so they're under our revenue limit. We include them. We tax for them, and then we have to send a check right out the door. So that's what the pass-through means. But to John Q. Public, they see KUSD increasing their taxes, but it's really increased number of private school vouchers is a portion of that. Then there's the independent charter school piece. So these are included in our membership count in our Third Friday, three-year rolling average piece for revenue limit purposes, but then we have to cut a checkout. And the problem with the independent charter school is the amounts are not the same. So our revenue limit number per pupil is about eleven thousand, seven hundred dollars per pupil. The amount that the independent charter schools get is like twelve thousand, I want to say it was twelve thousand, um, two hundred or something. There's like a five or six hundred dollar difference where we're only receiving X amount, but we're paying out a greater amount. So that's what I meant by we're supplementing these and we're money laundering these.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hamden. All right, are there any further questions? Oh, I'll take it back. Yes, Mr. Bryan?
Adding to my colleague's question and also in response to a question from a member of the public about, you know, what it would take to increase some transparency, is that something that, you know, like, I don't even know what that even takes, like, to get that included on tax bills, like, what would be involved with that?
Right, so I, I think I would start here with a resolution. I was in a couple of districts that did that. But then it would require us working with the local municipalities to get it as an insert. I've seen it as an insert into property tax bills. But there would need to be a the, the resolution would be a good starting place, but then there would need to be outreach to those other municipalities to have it be an insert.
So would it be too late this year to probably do that, or?
Yeah, as far as.
You, you can do a resolution, but honestly,
Those conversations.
This is more on the municipalities and it's, it's their administration of those tax bills and there's probably way past
Yeah.
that point in their process because it's fairly involved on their side. Now, if you're talking about an insert versus, you know, is there a cost to that? That's not a cost that the district's going to bear. Are they gonna? They, they have a process. Are they going to attach a flyer to each tax bill? Like, you know, you know what I mean? Logistically, it's probably not something they'd be interested in taking on, because they're not funded for it either.
With the conversation, I think it's a good idea.
That could be a Swassa topic. I know it's been done by some districts in Swassa.
Or maybe a news article. Okay, thank you, Mr. Hamden. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Thank you. And we have three resolutions. The first one is American Education Week, Mr. Price, Dr. Price, sorry.
All right, I am reading American Education Week. Uh, November seventeenth through the twenty-first. Whereas American Education Week is designated to celebrate and honor the individuals who ensure every child receives a quality education. And whereas collaborative sponsors include the U.S. Department of Education and many other organizations representing educators, administrators, counselors, school boards, and families. And whereas public schools are the backbone of our democracy, providing young people with the tools they need to maintain our nation's precious values of freedom, civility, and equality. And whereas Kenosha Unified Schools serve as vital centers of learning and opportunity, preparing students for college, career, and life. And whereas students, staff, and students, parents, staff, and community partners share responsibility for promoting and maintaining a nurturing, safe academic environment where students receive excellent, challenging learning opportunities and experiences that prepare them for success. And whereas all Kenosha Unified staff work tirelessly to serve our children and community with great care and professionalism. And whereas our schools encourage the bringing together of children, families, educators, volunteers, business leaders, and elected officials in a common enterprise that offers exceptional opportunities in academics and extracurricular activities to provide students with the skills needed to grow and succeed in a global society. Now, therefore be it resolved that Kenosha Unified School District does hereby proclaim November seventeenth to twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, as American Education Week. And expresses gratitude to all who contribute to the success of our students and schools and make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. And next we have Resolution and Recognition of Native American Heritage Week. Mrs. Landry?
Whereas National Native American Heritage Month is celebrated from November first through November thirtieth as a way to consider and recognize the contributions of Native Americans to the history of the United States of America. And whereas Native Americans are the original inhabitants of what is now the United States, and their descendants continue to enrich our nation. And whereas Native Americans have made lasting contributions as business owners, artists, teachers, writers, members of our armed forces, and much more. And whereas their rich and diverse cultures, traditions, and histories are cause for celebration and appreciation. And Native American Heritage Month provides an opportunity to honor and acknowledge the legacies and unique challenges Native Americans have faced. And whereas National Native American Heritage Month is an opportune time to educate students about Native American cultures, traditions, and contributions that have influenced business law, education, politics, science, and the arts while raising awareness of the resilience of tribal nations, past and present. And whereas corresponding school activities held in November as well as throughout the school year will support this goal by deepening student understanding and appreciation of Native American history and heritage. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Kenosha Unified School District's Board of Education proclaims November as National Native American History Month, Heritage Month, honoring the many contributions of Native Americans and affirming our commitment to education, respect, and inclusivity. Like to make a motion to approve?
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. And the last one, but not the least in importance, Resolution and Recognition of Veterans Day, Mr. Tierney.
All right, Veterans Day, November eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Whereas Veterans Day, originally known as Armistice Day, was established in honor of the end of World War One on November eleventh, nineteen eighteen. And whereas Veterans Day is now a time to recognize and honor all the men and women who have served in the United States Armed Forces, protecting our freedoms and ensuring the security of our nation. And whereas sacrifices and the sacrifices and service of our veterans, both in times of peace and in war, demonstrate unwavering commitment, courage, and patriotism and inspire us all. And whereas schools play a vital role in teaching students about sacrifices made by veterans to preserve democracy and freedoms, ensuring future generations understand and appreciate their service. And whereas the families of veterans also deserve recognition for the support they provide, their loved ones in uniform, enduring long separations and the challenges that accompany military service. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Kenosha Unified School District recognizes November eleventh as Veterans Day, honoring the service and sacrifice of our nation's veterans and encourages staff, students, and families to participate in local ceremonies, projects, and activities that show appreciation for our veterans and their families. Like to make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. And that brings us to the donations to the district. Mr. Tierney?
All right, the district has received the following donation. Uline donated a Rubbermaid truck lift to Trumper High School valued at eleven hundred and fifty bucks. Administration recommends, or sorry, I make a motion to approve. Per board policy, fourteen hundred, authorize the establishment of appropriate accounts to monitor fiscal activity, amend the budget to reflect this action, and publish the public change per Wisconsin statute sixty-five ninety-five A.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to accept the donations. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. This brings us to our announcements and updates by board members, starting with Mrs. Stevens. She's good. Mrs. Adams is good. Mr. Bryan?
Uh, congrats, Todd, on your recognition with Wozbee. I think I got to level five, so I don't know if that's lower or higher than you, but, you know, we're somewhere, somewhere in the range. Um, you, you'll, you'll catch up to me, though. And yeah, just echo the sentiments of our past resolution, you know, happy Veterans Day to people that, you know, made the sacrifice. And I know Bob, with you being a veteran, thank you for your service and, yeah, otherwise, that's pretty much about it.
Thank you, Mr. Bryan, Mr. Dr. Price.
Thanks to all the teachers. They're doing a great job. Went and did the parent-teacher conferences and the biology teachers, math teachers, art, and coaches, and thank you, Bob, for your service.
Mrs. Landry?
I just want to show appreciation for the theater program here at KUSD. I went and seen Finding Nemo Junior with my daughter, and it was, it was really funny. It's got a lot of good humor in there. Um, and I would encourage everyone to go out and see some of the shows that KUSD puts on.
Thank you, Mr. Tierney.
I want to say thank you all the veterans that serve in our district, on the board. I know Dr. Wise, I mean, pretty much, almost all of us have somebody that's been touched by a veteran or support veterans. Um, I also want to say, enjoy your day off on Halloween to the students who come by my house and you celebrate. I'll give you candy. If you're a parent, I'll give you an adult beverage. And, uh, thank you, Josh, for coming up here and sitting through this amazingly entertaining meeting.
Thank you, Josh, for attending. Okay, motion to adjourn. Mrs. Landry?
Second.
Mrs. Stevens made the motion to adjourn. Mrs. Landry seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion pa, chair votes aye, motion passes. We are adjourned.